Call the meeting of the Delaware County Council to order June 27, 9:00 a.m. I'd like for Mr. Madsen to lead us in the pledge of... What? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Has the agenda... Oh, she's on the...
Yes.
Agenda's been posted. Thank you. All of them say aye if you approve the agenda.
Aye.
I vote same. Sign. Roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Quakenbush.
Yes.
Here. Next, I have on the agenda is approval of amendments from May the 23rd. Do I hear a motion? Tell me.
Second.
motion by Larry, second by Jane. Roll call please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the financial agenda. Mrs. Patterson. She went to run some copies. We can move on to tax abatements while we're waiting on her. Scott?
Yeah, there were, I guess, one thing of note is there were some compliance inspections done, which I wasn't able to get to, but Ron took my place and Jane, so you guys might be better off to discuss that than I. I know you visited, anybody with active abatements at this point for compliance?
Yes, we visited Midwest Metal, quite impressive. And then we visited Magna, also impressive. Magna's biggest problem is getting employees. They cannot get employees that will show up to work every day and on time, which I thought was kind of sad. And then we went to Lawson's Nursery, another little hidden treasury in Delaware County. So, I very enjoyed, thank you for inviting me to go. That's the tax abatement report.
Well, the reason I called Scott to do an inspection was that Cheryl in the auditor's office asked me to sign the documents updating all the abatements, and I didn't feel I should sign them until I had a report from the committee and a report from our attorney. Mr. Hughes has looked them over.
Great.
He's satisfied that everything's in order, so I'll sign them today and return them back to the auditor's office. Unlike Jane, I was very impressed, and the Magna tax abatement was actually on the building that's owned by another company, and that Magna is the less or. But they've added $12 million worth of equipment out there without asking for tax abatement, so I thought that was quite interesting also. And as Jane said, Lawson's is so impressive, they've remodeled the old farmhouse, and they have professionals with a degree, architectural landscape designers doing cap design, cats, and they're doing a $200,000 landscape proposal on existing property, existing home. That was impressive. And they were right there doing it as we were there. Two of them were graduates, one was senior, so that was fun to do. Thank you. Call it back. Okay, you ready to do the financial agenda?
Yep. You want to start with the new appropriations first? Do you want me to read all this community correction or just the total?
No ma'am, I'd like for you to read the total if everyone agrees.
Okay. Community Corrections Adult 1122, total request 892,364. You want me to go ahead and read them all, their different funds, or you want to do them one at a time?
We can do them all, as far as I can see. I'd read them all.
Okay.
Now, let's just vote on, it's a state grant, it's been approved by the state, it's been approved by the Community Corrections Board, which comprises about 21 people.
Okay.
And all we're doing is appropriating the funds so they can be spent.
Okay. Community Corrections Transition Program, total request 31,677. Community Corrections User Fees Fund, total request 1,0358.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Move to approve. Second. Any comments? Roll call please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Community Bridge Fund, Bridge 701 Albany, 100,000, total request 100,000.
Can I hear a motion? Someone?
Second.
Jessica, second. Do we have a representative of the Highway Department here?
Good morning, counsel.
Please.
This is for funding for construction of the rehab of Bridge 701, located on Water Street over Hathaway Creek in Albany. We plan to go to construction this summer, late summer.
This is an in-house?
Well, it's locally funded.
That's what I mean, yeah. No federal or state participation. Any questions? Comments? Do I hear a motion?
Sorry, may I?
Excuse me. I've got it right there. Excuse me. Roll call please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
EMS Ambulance Replacement Fund, ambulance remount $61,455, total request $61,455, which also goes with the next one, which is EMS Capital Improvement Fund, 443 ambulance remount $61,455, total request $61,455.
Move to approve. Second. Scott? Second by Larry.
Good morning, counsel. The reason this is broken into two different accounts is the total cost of...
Name address, phone number.
My name is Jason Rogers. I am the Emergency Management Director for Delaware County. Thanks, Ron. The total cost is 122,000 for to remount the box with Braun Industries, and we decided to split that cost between the capital improvements account, which we've bought and purchased ambulances and done remounts with in the past, and also the ambulance replacement fund. Neither one of those would have the total in it, so we split the cost, and we didn't want to empty either account, so there's money left for both of those in event that we need to do emergency affairs.
Roll call.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Lowet Special Distribution by Timulus Aggregate, 664,530.48, total request 664,530.48.
Move to approve. Move by Scott.
Second.
Second by Jessica.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Bob Jesse, County Highway. This money, we're just moving it. That was our state money, and we're just moving it over where we can use it to pay on the fifty grand.
Is that the special distribution that came in last year?
Well, no. We got that, and this is what the state paid us, our half of the grant fund.
I think we got the money in Gendure.
So, you're appropriating it into a specific fund?
Right.
At this time?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
The next one, Surveyor Perpetuation Fund's been withdrawn. Still withdrawn.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Transfer Agenda, Communications Center, and we have a correction. The account 127 and A127, those should both read 20,000. What's the rest of it? What's that figure?
Oh, Paul Singleton, Director 911. What we have figured is left in the account is 20,026.80, and that will cover that line item through the rest of the year, because we had about a three-week gap in hire, and then she will be paid at 90% for, to finish that time out.
Okay, then the rest of the transfers, D118 minus $3,058, 194 20 plus $1,500, 172 per plus $1,558.
Move to approve. Second. Move by Scott. Second by Chris. Questions? Comments? There will comment, Mr. Stapleton was in communication...
Ron?
Singleton.
Thank you.
He had to ask who I was, it's all right.
Ron? My phone number would be 911 if I did.
I slid a tongue. Anyway, he was in contact with me right after the meeting last month, and kept on with the process, and he's moving a part-time person in, and so that he could pay out the person leaving without asking for any additional funds. So, he worked out that schedule, so the part-time person will come on full-time at the proper time. Thank you for that. Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
EMS, these are all new hires, do you want me to read them all?
Well, it's a pleasure, the counsel. These are just transferring from old salary to new salary.
To create new line items, yes.
Make a motion to approve them as presented? Some moved, I'll do that. By Larry. Who's second?
Scott.
Scott's second. Roll call.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay, same with the next ones for the jail.
Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
Some moved.
Second. Scott. Move. Chris, second. This is a little different situation in that in our ordinance, we've allowed the hiring of correctional officers before the line items are established for the new hires by the council, but Maggie here? Couldn't make it. I'm pretty sure she has everything in order here, so roll call please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Title 40 court, 175 insurance, minus 2,000, 23 travel expense, plus 2,000, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Scott, I didn't hear who made the second.
Ms. Piper.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Public Safety Share, 172 insurance, minus $89, 173 life insurance, plus $4, 175 short-term disability, plus $85, excuse me, total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Oh, I did skip one, sorry.
Okay. We're on the...
Yeah, I skipped one, I'll have to go back.
You got a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Where was that? Chris.
Second, if you're going to go with that, we skipped one, yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Community Correction...
That isn't right.
It's all down one line, it's correct. They all, see, this all needs moved up one line. It's correct. If you go across here, every one of these should be moved up one line.
But there's not a plus and a minus on the jail.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, I didn't catch that perfect. Community Corrections User Fees, Administrative Assistant, minus $1,154, Executive Director, plus $1,154.
Move to approve. Second. Scott, second by Larry. Anyone here speak on this?
Sharon McCormick, DCC Financial Manager. This is the amount of money from May the 10th through June the 30th to cover Mitch, our executive director's raise. Our advisory board met and gave him a $7,500 raise to put him more in line with the probation officer's salary due to he took a little decrease in pay when he became our executive director.
This was explained to us at the Finance Committee meeting, that actually he has the same role as a probation officer, and that's why the advisory board and the state also approved it in the grant, to bring him in line with what a parole officer his capacity would be.
Jeff Arnold, Delaware County Prosecutor. There's a little more to that too, Ron. He does all those things that you're talking about. I was president at that advisory board for two years, and still on the board. When Mitch took that job, he took a considerable pay cut, and part of the negotiations on trying to get him over there, and what we promised him we would do is, within an amount of time, we would try to get him raised up to his old salary. We didn't do that for a long time, and Mitch just kept working, and finally, we decided we had to get that done. So, that's why we're doing that, that's why it was done, it's very deserving, and I would ask to approve that.
Thank you.
There was a lot of discussion in the finance meeting too, and we kind of reached the conclusion that it was warranted in there to approve that as well, so for what that's worth.
What else? Roll call please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
One more time.
Highway Department. This is a new hire? Or is this another cleanup?
It's a cleanup.
Okay. Remember, Perry was trying to put the right people in the right places, so...
I hear a motion to approve. Some moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay, go back one page to the jail. Jail just brought this to my attention, this doesn't add up. First of all, you'll notice they're all down one line, so kind of don't pay attention to that, but we've got a plus 19,000 and a minus 19,000, then we have two plus 19,000s. I don't know which one's the minus.
Well, I can find out.
Plus, the other problem is 135 corporal is minus 18,000, and we're plusing in 19,000. So, I'm not real sure. Well, never mind, because if you move them all up one line, yeah. I'm not real sure what it's supposed to be.
Okay, D128 should be minus 19,534.
It should be minus?
Uh-huh, what they have.
Okay.
E128 should be plus 19,534. B120, 19,534 minus. C120 is plus 19,534.
Okay, hold on, because that's totally not...
That last one, Denise, can you say, is that plus 19,534?
Uh-huh, it's plus.
All right.
You want me to go on, Donna?
Wait a minute. Okay.
You have any going?
Yeah, the 18,000s.
144 minus 18,312. A144 plus 18,312. 135 minus 18,443. A135 plus 18,443.
Could you please send us a copy of this page as it should be?
Yeah.
And make sure it's corrected in the minutes that way?
Yep.
So, I talked to Maggie about this, and I didn't know she wasn't going to be here, but she called me to assure me that everything was in order, so.
I didn't look at it close enough, I'm sorry.
Well, it was nothing, Maggie.
Yeah, I understand. I got it.
That's it.
Okay, that's the financial agenda, the transfer agenda. Need a motion?
No, no, no. You had an addendum.
I got an addendum. You guys all have that? Public Defender, 162.
Going somewhere.
Public Defender minus 16,71237. A162 Public Defender plus 16,71237.
Move to approve. Second. Move by Scott. Second by... Seems I hear the second.
Second.
Chris.
Thank you.
What do you want to say?
Well, I am just here on Emily Anders, our court administrator. Mindy is off this week, so I just told her if you had any questions, I would be able to answer them for you. My understanding is this is a new employee, Public Defender, and she didn't know the new salary ordinance, so that's why it was an addendum, she got it in too late, but it's just a new employee, and she needed to get it into council for your approval.
She's aware that there won't be any money there to pay somebody if they're not paid out.
Right, this is just to get them started, but she wasn't aware that it had to go in front of council, so that's why it got in late.
But if she needs additional money for that new position, I'm not going to approve it.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry to miss you there. I saw that this morning, it was buried somewhere. Okay. I'll make a motion.
Now, I need that motion. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the financial transfers with light reductions and to amend the salary ordinance.
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay, we've done tax abatements. Don't think we have any appointments to consider. I did receive a nice document from our two appointments from the library, some of you guys did too, thanking us for the appointment. Personnel, Mr. Spangler did provide me this morning with the final documents of all base salaries for all employees, and he's planning on presenting a copy of that to the auditor, and if any other council members would like to have one, he will get you one or send it to you electronically. With the price of ink, I think I'll ask him to send, get him one if I want it. That's a bunch of stuff to print with all those, there's a lot of blockouts in here, so. Appreciate it very much. I know they've been a long time coming on this, and we need this, and it needs to be kept up to date, as every one of these changes you saw coming across today, those all relate to this document right here. So, we thank you for that, sir. Do we have any ordinances? No? We have a resolution on the agenda. Mr. Hughes think has a comment to make on that. I presented it to him, and I'll turn the floor here.
As you recall, after the rather compelling presentation by the prosecuting attorney, we drafted a resolution that was to be a joint resolution expressing this.
we drafted a resolution that was to be a joint resolution expressing this to the county that it would not be in our best interest to establish a syringe and needle distribution program. Subsequent to that, we were advised by the commissioners that they were not going to consider joining in that resolution. That left us with what would just really be the sense of the county council, and that's the draft, the second draft that was distributed in advance of this meeting. The concern I have is that you are a fiscal body, not the legislative body of the county, and at present time, there's no request for funding of a program of this kind, and my suggestion would be that, and it's entirely up to you, but my suggestion would be you may want to consider setting this aside until such time as there is a funding request involving this type of program, and then you could consider whether or not you think it's appropriate for the county to go forward.
Thank you, sir. So, based on the way we operate, I'll ask for a motion to consider this, and if I hear none, it will die for lack of a motion. Anyone care to make a motion to consider this resolution?
I will make that motion.
Hearing none, the motion dies. Okay. Next item on the agenda is amendment to the Sheriff's Employee Pension Plan. Turn the floor over to Mr. Hughes.
Again, as you recall, we had discussion of this at the last meeting. The council made a request for some changes to the proposed amendment, and I think those have been distributed and the changes that requested were inserted, specifically a sunset provision, which is on the top of page four. There is also another change made in supplemental page one in section one. My understanding, I don't have the record of it, my understanding that this has been referred back to the mayor's board and considered by them. Subsequent to that, I had a discussion with the county attorney. His concern is that they are about to begin negotiations with the county police bargaining unit, and of course, the council's not involved in those collective bargaining negotiations, but the pension plan is really a part of a compensation benefits package that they will be talking about in the course of those negotiations. So, his request, and I certainly understand where it's coming from, because to make, if you're making unilateral changes on behalf of bargaining unit members, you're really violating the collective bargaining agreement. So, my recommendation would be that the council consider tabling the amendment until the bargaining process is complete, and then out of that, they will say, yes, we've agreed to this, and then it will be appropriate for you to sign off on it. That's my recommendation.
Can I speak to that? John Boling, Delaware County Sheriff's Office, Captain. This retirement plan is outside what the commissioners negotiated by state law, it's only an agreement between council, the mayor's board, and the sheriff. It shouldn't have any discussion with the commissioners or that. Any changes to this has to be agreed by those three parties, not the commissioners.
But it does affect bargaining unit members, is that correct?
It affects all of them. In, myself, I'm not a bargaining unit administrator, so it affects the entire purpose of that wood, I ask those members also.
Well, I guess that would be my concern, what it is, we're not actually just approving the drop program, we're making a change to the, I mean, according to what I'm looking at here, we're making a change to the retirement package.
Well, you're just adding the drop provision.
Right, but I mean, we're not just approving the drop program, I mean, this is actually making a, going back and making a change in the, where's that? The Delaware County Police Retirement Plan.
Adding an amendment to it.
Right, right.
Just adding the amendment part.
Just the drop.
Just the drop part.
Right.
Yes, I mean, I think that's, well, when I had your question back a couple of months ago about this needing the commissioners' approval, that's when I remember seeing, I think Mr. Hughes brought our attention, that it's all by state, and any amendment has to be adopted by the county council, not the commissioners.
It's not considered contracts, it's not considered bargaining agreement, it's just based off state law. It's a pension created by the sheriff's office with agreement with the council and the mayor's board.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I want to go ahead and make a motion for a resolution to make approval of the amendment to the sheriff's whole pension plan.
Do I hear a second?
You know, I think with several discussions, and I, you know, looking back, I'm glad we've had this delay in these discussions, because I think it's brought out a lot more information. I know I learned more than I thought I knew back in February with the sunset clause. I think, I think that lets us have a little bit of leeway there if it's not turned out financially beneficial to the plan, but also, everything that we've received so far, I don't see how this would harm the plan, and it's been held us long-term actuarially wise with the plan as it's presented now. And also adding this language that a sheriff would have to be, not only be ten years vested, but have to be at the age of fifty-five, and that's something that wasn't in there before.
Yeah, that was brought to our attention by the actuary that when the council made changes to the plan in 2010 to increase the vested years to ten, and also increase the age to fifty-five, the actuary noticed that it was ten years or fifty-five, so theoretically, a sheriff that maybe was elected at age fifty, he served his eight years, he became fifty-five, he would still be able to draw the pension. And that was, I know, one thing that you're, that was brought up in 2010 to try to address that, but technically, it wasn't.
It's a word, I know.
So, with this, what was added in this amendment also, as of the last meeting when Stan Brown was here, it was changed to make that ten years and age fifty-five. So, therefore, that would, you know, a sheriff coming in, serving eight years, would not be eligible to participate in the plan. And that's in this amendment, too. Without this, that still theoretically could happen.
As presented, was this approved by the mayor's board?
I'm sorry?
This amendment was approved by the mayor's board?
This current amendment has been approved by the mayor's board and sheriff.
Why haven't we received any formal correspondence or anyone from the mayor's board appearing to report counsel on this?
I'd hardly know one, no one asked for it.
Well, they're party to it.
They're party to it, but they're two, they're separate, separate entity that has to agree to it, so it's presented to them, they agree to it, the sheriffs agree to it, and then the third party, yourself, being the council, is being presented to you for approval.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion that we table that at this time.
Motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Scott. Okay. Motion to table with a second.
You have an original motion, right?
How's that?
From Larry, second by Clarence Hughes.
I know, but we've got a motion now to table that and a second, and that limits debate, and I'll call for the roll on the table.
Ms. Lassiter.
From the advice of our attorney, I'm going to vote to table that, yes.
Mr. Matchit.
No.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
No.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quaconbush.
Yes.
Okay, when we're all on, we're ready for all these comments. Anyone want to make an argument? I can speak to this guy.
Jeff Arnold, Delaware County Prosecutor. Ron and Maricel, where should we come from here, soon? Last year, I reported to the council that I had written a state grant that is actually funded by federal money, is our tax dollar, and started a domestic violence unit. That unit is on a fiscal year instead of a calendar year, so we have now finished our first year in that program. From one-one, two thousand sixteen, to six-twenty-one, two thousand sixteen, when I got that unit started, there were seventy-six domestic violence strangulation rate or sexual battery cases filed, which were crimes against women. Thirty-one of those were dismissed, so that's a dismissal rate of about forty-one percent. After Maricel Skiles started that program, going with my new investigator and a new victim advocate, from January first, two thousand seventeen, through six-twenty-one, two thousand seventeen, there were a hundred and forty-seven of those cases filed, only eleven of them were dismissed. That's about a seven percent dismissal rate. So, cases doubled, dismissal rate went from forty-one percent down to about seven percent. So, that, that unit has been extremely effective, in fact, they've been too effective. What we found was that we could not keep up with the misdemeanors and the felonies, so I started asking them about, probably three months ago, only do the felonies, and we're just going to have to leave the misdemeanors alone, and we'll see if we can get some help. So, when we wrote the new grant, I asked for another attorney and another investigator in that grant, I never thought I would get it, because there wasn't any more federal money available. You were, the total cap on the statewide award remained the same as it was the year before. However, they granted that extra attorney and extra investigator, which is a real plus for us, because with your blessing, I'm going to put the same unit then into city court, and so we'll have a division of those cases from felony court to city court. The match on that grant for me to receive the hundred and forty-five thousand is about twenty-five percent, or I think about twenty-eight thousand, and I'm going to let Ron to talk to you about that just briefly. But the problem that I have, and I understand that Ron has called a special meeting, which I really appreciate, is I have to get those people hired and start that grant by July first. If we don't, we don't use the money, you have to send it back. I bumped the executive director of the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, the director, David Murtaugh, he's a past sheriff, he's been involved at the state government for many, many years, who got, I bumped into him yesterday when I was at a legislated meeting and got talking to him, and he thanked us for the work that we do, and I think it was, don't write this in paper, because I'm not sure this is what he said, but some county, and I think it was Pipe County, had turned down their grant award, and I said, well, what do you do with that? And he said, well, that's a real problem, because what happens is that other people, if, had we known they were going to turn that down, we could have funded other groups, now it's too late. And he said, they'll never get funded again. So, it's important that we try to accept these programs and we can get to them, it's a great way for me to have, continue to put more services in the city and the county. Domestic violence is an economic development issue, it's an issue that touches all of us, and it's something that we're finally doing something about, but the only way that you can do that is by having a specialized group who can get to those victims quickly, stay with those victims, and help provide them the services that they need, and keep them on board through that process. And that's the only way you can break what's called a cycle of violence. So, we have the ability to do that now in city court, we've just got to find a match. And I'll let Ron to talk to you a little bit about those numbers and have Maricel ask any questions. I'm going to call each one of you prior to that special meeting, so I can answer any questions you have, explain the program, et cetera, et cetera, but I'll let them go ahead at this point. Thank you.
Rhonda Foster, Delaware County Prosecutor's Office. A little bit about the grant, I mean, we did receive a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. What we're asking for right now is just so that we can get started, there's eleven pays starting July twentieth to the end of the year. With that being said, I mean, a little bit, which I put in a request already, is a little over fifty-five thousand dollars, two quarters, which is what that will be, reimbursed from a stock grant would be thirty-five thousand dollars. So, I know the county has to put up that fifty-five thousand, but at the end of the day, it's twenty thousand fifty-nine dollars after the grant comes in and reimburses. Do you have any questions about that?
Okay, just briefly, Ron called me and wanted me to meet with her, Arnold, and I did, and we went through this, and I just thought it would be prudent to ask the council members, because we ask everyone not to ask for new money, and this is asking for new money. It's being submitted and advertised, both general fund and lower safety, so we can look at it both ways. I guess what I need is a confidence vote from the council members to go ahead with the emergency meeting. I can cancel the emergency meeting, but timing was such that I had to call it before I could talk with the rest of you, so. Does anybody oppose to the emergency meeting? That's the only question I have. If I hear none, we'll continue and then we'll do final discussion, but I asked Jeff to be here today to kind of brief you on it, so you'd know why we're having an emergency.
Okay.
I really do appreciate that, Ron.
I advertised it as a special meeting.
Well, that's fine, as long as we have it.
Right, okay, so, it doesn't have to be before July first?
No.
Okay, can, okay.
It can be before July first, according to that.
Okay.
Your advertising schedule, remember, they didn't put it in the paper right away, so we had to wait till the... They didn't put it in the paper right away, so we had to wait till the paper, yeah, we had lost like three or four days.
Right.
Because of the policy of the newspaper.
Okay.
On advertising. Now, I mean, we're.
We're aware that. We're gonna lose 20 days of, if this goes through, we're still gonna lose 20 days of that grant money, so.
That's okay. But last year, it takes me about 45 days usually to hire an attorney, investigator a little quicker. But by the time we interview all the applicants and I make final decisions, usually about 45 days. We, I can't afford to do that this time.
I do have a question. You said this may start July 20th?
The fiscal year.
July 1st.
No, fiscal year, July 1.
Okay.
It's odd, because they, and it happens all over the state. We didn't get notification of this until.
Last Friday?
A week ago.
A week ago. It says, "Your new grant's gonna start July 1st. Congratulations, we've given you two extra people." Well, our.
July 10th.
Yeah. My question is, is are you asking us to fund this from?
July 20th.
From July 20th to the end of the year? And, I mean, do you have money in your, in your budget to be able to fund that through the end of the year? Or are we gonna have to come up with some?
No.
Well, that's what I thought. I was just getting to that point. So we're gonna have to fund for this year, and also then put it in the budget for next year, and that's where you.
Correct.
Ron's asking you to put it in both.
Well, we did, we advertised for both now, and I'll do it later, because we won't know before I turn the budget in.
Right.
That was, that was gonna be my question. You're only asking for one. You just turned it in.
Yes, absolutely.
To the, because I won't be here at that meeting, so I wanted to make sure before your paperwork ready.
One or the other.
Okay. Okay.
And it's for the balance of this year.
Yes.
And, and we're appropriating the full amount, and then we'll get 75 percent of that back.
Correct.
But it looks like we're asking, you're asking for the whole amount. Then in your 2018 budget, you'll have the whole program in there.
Yeah, I was concerned about coming in and asking for a dime more, and when you explained to me, Ron, when I met with you, that I had to ask for $55,000. That was shocking. But it's the reimbursement that I, if you have to ask for all of it, then it's reimbursed. I didn't quite follow that.
Is the 55K, is that, is that just for half the year?
Yes.
Okay. So this is gonna be.
For both positions.
For both positions?
Yeah, for the deputy prosecutor and investigator.
Okay. See, I haven't seen that part. That's why. I just see $55,000, so.
Yeah, no.
But that's two posi, okay, that makes more sense now.
With FICA, perp, and insurance.
Okay.
Okay, that includes all that.
Because I don't usually just do the salaries for you guys, just so you know.
So next year, you'll ask for 140 some.
Whatever, yes.
Roughly. Okay. Okay, makes sense now.
Okay.
I haven't seen all that.
Will you be able to have those figures for next year by the?
Yes.
By the 10th?
Yes. Well, I already have turned the budget in, so yeah, I mean, I'll have.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's kind of like Jeff said, he just got notice that he got the grant, and he called, well, Ron called immediately. Wanted me to just hop, hop, hop footed up there? I did. Well, I, I just, you know, I'm trying to lead the pack on not adding any new money, and it's kind of tough to do. But if the council's ready to meet on the 10th, we'll meet on the 10th, and I'd say you probably ought to at least post a dang doc.
What's your line?
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
What's the date of the special meeting?
Well, we couldn't, because they only publish on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays.
Oh, then I'll be here. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So we had to move it to the.
Okay.
I guess we should announce that now. We're all aware of it, and the newspaper's aware of it, but just for the minutes, we'll say that a special meeting has been called for 9:00 AM on July the 10th to consider prosecutors' request. Okay. Well, I've got a couple of things here. I'm still on audience comments, and I noticed Mrs. Arrington's here. She's our representative to the state legislature. Thank you for coming. Would you wanna say a few words?
No, just that, I guess I do.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I also wanted to say that I'm a former member of this county council. In fact, that's how I got my start in elected office, and I learned a lot, and it's been good for me ever since. Thank you.
I'd kind of forgotten. Sorry. Okay, I have a couple of housekeeping things here. We met, the finance committee met after their regular meeting Thursday of last week, and prepared the budget for the council for next year. There's a couple of changes, very minor changes, but there's a big change since we took $100,000 in January and put it in public safety health insurance. We've put that in the 2018 budget. So that's a large increase in the 2018 budget. In the council's regular budget, it was reduced by $300.
Council budget was reduced by $348 due to the fact that the attorney is now paid by contract instead of salary.
So therefore, this is for your information, if you have any questions, see if we need to make a change before finally approve. I'm submitting it this time and sign my name to it on behalf of the finance committee.
Also, Ron, on the LOIT budget, it increased by $163,000, not just $100,000. We added $100,000 for public safety health insurance, yes. And then last year, sheriff pension was approved, $837,000. This year, you had me put the request in at $900,000. So that was $63,000 increase.
Forgot about that. Thank you very much for pointing that out. We rounded that off and added the $100,000.
Right.
Okay. One other item, and since Maggie isn't here, I guess I'll just contact her, but make the council aware that there's money being collected in fees. Is that correct, Donna?
Yes.
And it's accumulated $177,113.42. It needs to be transferred to Sheriff's Pension Plan?
Needs to be paid to them.
Paid to them, paid to the plan?
Last year, they contributed $60,000, and I don't know why only $60,000. That left a balance of $93,000 in the fund, and right now, there's 170?
177,113.42.
And last year, they made the payment, I believe it was June, I forgot to bring that up, but I believe they made the payment in June last year, $60,000.
So I'll pursue that. I don't know.
But that fund is called Sheriff's Pension Plan.
That has to be started with the sheriff's office, so, right?
Yep.
I'll talk to Maggie about that. I don't know why she's not here, but.
They've gotta make that transfer?
They have to just turn in the claim to make the payment.
Pay it. They have to pay it. Donna keeps correcting me, I say transfers, she said pay it. Has to be paid.
Yes.
We'll get her paid. And that will help that balance on behalf of the Pension Plan. Just to point out, so you'll recognize, there is a balance in LOIT spatial distribution. Yes, that's all I have. Anybody else want to say anything before we adjourn?
Yep. I have to have dates for the budget hearings.
Okay.
Last year, last year, we met on Tuesday, September 6th, which is normal. We always meet Tuesday after Labor Day. So I need to know what your plans are for this year, so I can get the room reserves, and so I can get my news legal. Because by the time you meet again, I need to have it done.
Personally, I would like to go back to the way we used to do it, and start on that Tuesday after Labor Day, and go the entire day from 8:30 to 3:30.
That was gonna be my other thing. I brought last year's schedule. For the last few years, we've started at 11:30, and we've only worked till like 5 o'clock, and then we turn around and come in the next day on Wednesday at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and only work till 5 o'clock. So I need to know how you want, you make the schedule up for the department, what time you want to start. I need to know what time you're gonna start on the Tuesday, because I have to put that in my legal. So first thing.
We could be able to knock them all out one, one day.
Well, if you guys.
If we started in the morning.
If you stay, yes. But the very first thing that we have to do is the public hearing, which usually lasts about five minutes.
Yeah.
So if you did that right at 8:30, then I could start scheduling 15 minutes after that. That's what we've been doing. We've been allowing 15 minutes for the public hearing, and then starting the schedule after that. So I can go by the same schedule, but just try to put everybody on the same day, or if you still want to do two days and do the, like, the big ones on Wednesday, I just need to know what you want to do. I'm afraid the sheriff's department's probably gonna take longer this year than it has in the past, because they're turning in their budgets, they're turning in everything that they currently have in county general and LOIT. In county general, they're also turning in a LOIT budget. So if you wanted to do like all the departments, except maybe like the sheriff and jail, and maybe the commissioners, and, you know, all these big ones that we've always allowed an hour for, if you want to do those on Wednesday morning, that's just, that's just a suggestion. You guys do what you want to do, but that's just kind of my suggestion.
I know, I would prefer to try to get it in one day, if that's feasible.
We can't do it in one day.
Oh, you're gonna be here numerous days.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. You're gonna be here numerous days.
Like the all-day Tuesday.
But what they're talking about is, I guess I should explain this, since you're new.
Thank you.
The first, the first couple of days, all the departments come in and meet with the council and plead their case about their budget, and then after, after that, then numerous days, you guys will meet and sit here and go through budgets. And last year, I also need to know this, last year, we adopted on Tuesday, October 25th, so I also need to know your plans for the adoption date. That way, Jessica, you've got from September till the end of October to meet up and on.
Tuesday, October 25th was our October meeting, right? When we.
Probably.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was.
Probably.
And that worked out pretty good. I'd say just do it at the October meeting.
Okay.
For final approval.
Okay.
That worked out pretty good.
So I just, I just.
The rest of it, I just like.
If you want to do it.
You know, I've heard rumors both ways. Some people have even made the comment to me that they're doing their very best to follow up on the letter I sent, and ask them to keep their 2018 budget with their 2017 budget, so those will go fast if there are someone to do that.
Yeah, I've probably received about, I'm gonna say 15 budgets so far, and the ones that I've looked at have been turned in, like last year, maybe a couple hundred dollars on some of them.
That's, we thank you.
I've got all the highway budgets.
So I'd say do what you're talking about on the first day, just do as many as you.
Make this whole schedule for the first day?
Scan the ones that aren't, in depth, and make a whole day's schedule. Just do it.
Okay, I'll make the whole day's schedule, I'll send it to Ron, have him look at it, then he can let you guys look at it, if you decide you don't want it, like, all I'm gonna do is take last year's schedule, cram it all into one day. And if you don't like that, get back with Ron, and if you want to do the big ones on Wednesday morning, say, then I'll change it. But I'll go ahead and do this one, send it to him, and then you guys can decide. I just basically need to know, we're gonna start on Tuesday after Labor Day and what day we're gonna adopt for now, so.
Why do we do that? Why, is that just, that is an old tradition, that Tuesday after Labor?
We've done that, in my 40 years, we've probably done that 38 times.
Yeah. I've always wondered why that day.
We had two years that we started in August.
Oh.
So other than that, we've always met Tuesday after Labor Day.
No problem.
And who's gonna tell Jessica what the new one has to do at budget time?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, her and Larry have to split. That's right.
That's right. Yours is.
Are you gonna get your lunch or something?
No, doughnuts. You have to bring doughnuts that morning.
Doughnuts, cookies, or whatever you feel. I'll fix something. Sometimes I like them. Yeah, Larry's moved, too. You guys get to split.
Yeah. I was always on that other side.
You get to split.
You get the hard side now.
You write your own menu there, and you get, get the work together.
We'll figure something out.
Oh, yeah.
That's all, that's all I have.
If you bring doughnuts, you bring milk and cookies.
That's all I got.
Okay. Anyone else? I think I'm finished. I hope, quite a bit on agenda today, I hope I can remember everything I was supposed to do now.
Ron, do you think, do you wanna knock some of those harder budgets into the next day, or you wanna think about it?
I'll work on it, and then I'll get back with you guys real quick.
Well, I'm guessing with cramming it all into one day, we're probably talking 8, 9 o'clock Monday night, if we start at 8:30 or Tuesday night.
I think we'll do it on one day.
If we do it on one day.
You know, for those that work a regular schedule, I don't know, might be better for them.
It don't matter to me. I would just assume we're gonna get it done.
I do, too. I think it's better.
Just after a while, I started to cross a little bit.
And I'll keep in contact. I was, yesterday afternoon was kind of an interesting day for me. All afternoon, I was on the phone, on council business, just one person after another, and the last one I talked to was Jessica about 6:30 last night. I was waiting on her to get off work, so she, I wouldn't get her machine. Trying to keep everybody informed of what was coming on.
One, one more thing, Ron, is that the, Jessica actually sent out a message on this, but at the AIC conference, I mean, we all took in a lot of information down there, but I believe we were the best attended group of any county there. We had everybody there, except Larry wasn't able to make it, but, but it was, it was, another, it's always good to go down there and be able to get a lot of that new information, especially the new legislation, which there wasn't this year, there weren't as many changes, but last year, there were quite a few changes in the new legislation that was passed down there, so it's good to be.
The human resource part was probably.
Donna came.
That was probably the best.
She was great.
We just had a good old Delaware County week there Saturday, and Chris didn't fare so well, but. They, they, they had the Indiana Drug Czar there, and, and I mean, you know all this stuff about drugs and everything, he was very personable and very informative, and very straight up about everything that's happening. And it was interesting that they brought in that quality of people. They brought in an attorney that I thought, something drives all, get out, and he was good. What was that he was talking about? Lost his subject.
You hear me, Reese?
That was the human resource.
The human resource guy was the good one.
Yeah, I was, it was mind-boggling. It was good stuff.
Yep.
And for Chris, he probably truck broke into.
So how much have they charged against your credit cards now?
Close to 600.
Your credit cards were in your truck?
Stole my wife's purse and our luggage, so.
Oh.
I were staying close for two days, but they, they still accepted it.
And you were down at the casino, right?
That was a good thing you didn't have any credit cards, you couldn't charge it.
Well, I thought someone else might mention it, but since this is your last meeting before the Delaware County Fair. I know, Donna and Jane, they're slacking. So I've got programs, I'll leave some out here, and we want to invite everyone to come and support us. We've got lots of fun activities planned for that week, and hope to see y'all out there.
All right. Thank you. Now, for the last time, anybody else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Don't move. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in the papers. Oppose, any time.